All right, it's a little bit after seven o'clock. The mayor's here, so we can start the caucus. I believe a huge agenda today. Trick or treat hours. Chris is not here, but we have discussed this and talked with the township. And we are going to do ours on Saturday, November 1st, from four to six. Now, I've received a lot of calls, and I know other people have, that people aren't happy, but it's hard to make everyone happy. There's a ballgame Thursday night, there's a football game Friday night. I've got a couple from 27 First News website. Austontown and Boardman are on Halloween. Canfield is on November 1st. And Poland and Salem so far. Youngstown's all on air, so there's a lot of people that aren't on there yet.
What is Youngstown?
They're not on there yet. I heard they were going to do theirs on Saturday also. I don't know that for sure.
Did you see whoever was dedicated back that said that, you know, the football games did not end present enough because there's older people in football, older kids, beyond kids aren't on football?
Yeah, well, that's true and not true.
There was still an hour.
Yeah, I mean, the band kids are there, fans, and you're not going to make everyone happy. There's going to be people saying, "The football game, why would you have it on the same as the football game?" And the next people are going to say, "There's events going on that day." But we've talked about this since last month, and you've got to draw a line to stand for something a little smaller.
I was thinking about this, and maybe we ought to start looking, instead of people's convenience, we ought to look at it from a safety perspective. Because Friday night, from five to seven, is going to be the prime time for traffic coming from Poland. From the visitors, people from Poland going to the game, there's going to be a whole lot more street traffic Friday night. Saturday will be better.
And you'll be like...
Safe. Four o'clock is the time for that. I did get a phone call from somebody, she's the, um, heads up the Little Bulldogs cheerleader. She has eighty kids that are going to some event, and they won't get home till six o'clock. She was asking if we could push it, extend it to seven o'clock.
And I've been talking to Eric Angaro, and he's talked to Marissa Gordon, who's the head of all that, and she said it's not going to be a problem with all the cheerleaders. So, I mean, you're going to talk to everyone you say they wanted to do, there's going to be another one that doesn't. You can't make everyone happy.
Yes, I think we saved it.
It's unfortunate.
Exactly.
Yeah. And that's what, like I said, they're doing their meeting tomorrow, that's where they're going to have it, and we've got to stay uniform with them.
They're doing Saturday then?
Saturday to township, four to six on Saturday.
Okay, so we're going to change our hours because we've always had five to seven?
Yeah, we're doing it.
I guess on Saturday it really wouldn't matter so much.
Yep. And then next year, hopefully it won't be an issue, because it should be a Saturday, the 31st will be a Saturday, actually, I'd be worried about it, but this year it is. So, that's what we're going to stick with. Passing around for your signatures, the resolutions for the Poland Schools Foundation Educational Excellence Banquet. There are three recipients this year. Student van leader is for academic contributions. Anthony Safara for community leader. And Jim Stewart for alumni. And that is going to be next Tuesday, seven o'clock at Lake Cook, if anyone's interested in going to that. If you're ever hanging here this time. Anyone else have any input, any caucus items they want to discuss?
Yeah, Lori, I just gave you this contract from Matty, what did you pronounce that?
Mattis or something?
Lawn and landscaping for the lighting and the Christmas tree lighting, all decorations. And probably I should put this up for motion to go and enter into this contract tonight. And then I'll give this to Anthony to review after we pass it, and then...
The papers are...
That's backwards. You reviewed it first. Okay, right. Hey, Bill, how much is it? It's, um, he has it at eleven hundred fifty to twelve hundred fifty depending, plus a hundred fifty dollars. So that would be fourteen hundred dollars maximum. And then six hundred dollars per year to store them, keep them, fix them, and put them up the following year.
So, the first year is...
First year, it's going to be fourteen hundred dollars maximum. He has eleven hundred fifty to twelve fifty, plus a hundred fifty dollars for a five-foot roof.
Okay.
So, fourteen hundred maximum.
And what was the six fifty for?
Six hundred is for the storing them, maintaining them, and putting them up the following year.
Okay, so the first year, that we don't have that.
We don't have that.
That's the second year.
Right, the six hundred will be...
Right, the fourteen hundred is putting them up, plus buying them all.
Okay, and after that, it'll be six fifty for stores plus...
Six.
Okay, and then any, like, lights that have to be replaced, or those will be additional charges as we go?
Right, he says that the replacement, repair of any lights is included in that six hundred price. Future years up and down will be six hundred unless display is increased in size. So that'll go up if we add stuff. If there's something huge we have to replace, then obviously we have to pay that extra cost, but...
So, we did have a number of...
And there are a couple other things that we're looking at. We might need a new tree for the front, and we're looking at also a new one for the gazebo. But that money, we've got the five hundred that we've set aside, and this isn't even dipping into that, so we could use that for other things as we want to add on to.
We get Russ.
Okay.
He has that date.
And he also, we wanted him a drop dead date for him to put on the contract. He would have them up by a certain time, so that we wouldn't be sitting around the week before wondering when he's going to put them up. The date, November 3rd is the date that, apparently, he works in areas, so he'll do all his Poland stuff at once, and then move over to, his crew over to Boardman to do all the Boardman stuff.
You're Russ.
And so, November 3rd was the date that he gave us. Now, he's got to coordinate with Russ to get the bucket truck, so if that doesn't work, they're going to have to rearrange that. But at least that gives us a whole month until the thing, the actual event, so that if something goes wrong, we have a month to fix it.
The date is the first Saturday in December, right?
Yes, December 6th.
So, are you happy with the whole thing, with what he...
Um, yeah, he's got, given us a couple references, and they are happy with them. Last time I talked, did I have the Edison bid? I don't think I did. I think I got the Edison bid the day after our meeting, class meeting. And in comparison, the Edison bid to do the tree was fifty-nine hundred dollars, just the lights on the tree.
Wow.
And it was, I think, three grand a year to put them up and take them down, just the tree.
That's a big difference.
It's huge. So, it's two ends of the spectrum. I mean, sometimes you get what you pay for, but at this point, we have no other option.
No comparison.
We have nothing to compare to unless we go back to having the street crew do it. So, I, I hope that, I mean, you met him. He seems competent. He didn't put a lot of detail in his contract. We kept going back to him and saying, "We need more, we need more," but this is just, he's not a contract kind of guy, I guess. I mean, this is just not really what he does. He does the work, and he doesn't... So, I guess the solicitor will have to look at it and decide if it's detailed enough and talk to him.
Is he an insurance and workers' comp and everything?
He does. I believe he gave us his insurance, yeah, two million dollar liability, workers' comp with ER. Can you read it better on yours? Eric Insurance or something?
I can hardly read it very clearly.
But all his information is on here, so if you have questions, he said feel free to call him.
We should be able to get a copy.
Oh, yeah, Eric Insurance, that's good.
But he should, he should bring a copy. Let's send you the document page.
They will, he will.
The insurance company will send either us or him.
Okay, yeah, we've got the phone number for Brian, or I guess...
Ron Parte, Ron Parte.
And he has, Eric has, he's got workers' comp.
Yes.
Yeah, it says workers' comp.
That's where, here he is, where it's from. Two million liability. Russ, he, it looks like he wants to put them up November 3rd. So, is there some way you can get your hands on a lift of some sort to help them out? Bucket truck or...
Or if that date doesn't work, we just work with him? I think he, he works at different locations, like he'll do all his Poland work at once, he'll go to Boardman and do all that work. So I think that's kind of the date that he was shooting to get the work done here.
Do what I can do to order a bucket truck.
If that doesn't work...
It would work.
Okay. You have a problem?
Sort of. We, what the problem is, it's the same problem all the time with the street department, you know? We'll have something planned, and something else comes up. And while you're finishing that, something else comes up, and something else, and you're just always behind, but...
I'm trying to make sure.
And if that's not good, then...
I'm trying to get us a bucket truck for nothing. Our own bucket truck.
That would be very nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, his name's on, his contact info's on the second page, so if you need to talk to him, if that, something comes up and you can't do it that day, then just...
We just need to, I see, to make sure it's not...
Hey, Lori?
Yes?
Can you confirm with him that he, his working comp is applicable to the state of Ohio?
Oh, yes, because he is in the firmage, right?
Right.
Oh, good point, okay.
Right.
I think we asked that question, but yes, I will.
There, there is no reciprocity between the states.
So we'd have to have it, we'd have to have it in Ohio.
Yeah, he's going to need it.
Oh, that's a good point, okay.
And he may carry it? I don't know.
Yeah, he does this much work over here, and he's right on board, and he's done it on that.
Unless nobody's asked him before.
Right. And there is no reciprocity.
Okay, well, that's good to know. In case he says that, I'll be able to say, "Yeah, there's no reciprocity."
Anyone else have any items for caucus?
Would you want to talk about the sidewalk?
Sure. Tomorrow, well, it's sort of part of my report, but I'll segue into you. Tomorrow, there's a meeting at the township, their normal meeting at six o'clock, and they invited us to go. I'm not able to attend, but Linda has volunteered to go. And I'm talking back with Eric Angaro, and what they're going to do is have everyone there and basically ask them up right in the open, Gary's going to be there, Mike Stepic is going to be there, all the people from the sidewalk, what's going on, is there any money left, what's the details, so we don't want to hear secondhand news, it'll be right there. But since that time, Linda has exciting developments you can share with us.
So, as you know, I've been hounding ODOT. Yesterday, I gave up hope because I really thought that we weren't going to get any assistance with it. And the last person that I talked to, actually, I've talked to three different individuals, and this last one was, I finally got to the Safe Routs to School manager. She phoned me back today after our class meeting yesterday, did not sound very helpful. She phoned me back today, and she said, "I have really good news. We, ODOT is going to give the township the money to finish those two houses in the village." So, I was really pretty happy.
You better get that right, you know?
Well, you know, I don't think that she would call and tell us this if it wasn't the case, but I definitely plan to find out about this tomorrow night at the meeting. And my, my original feeling was not to even attend the meeting because I asked Jim Charvelli when he called, was there a change? Because, you know, why, why are they inviting us if there's no change? And he said that Gary was going to be there, and Mike Stepic, and I said, "I've already talked about those people. So unless you can tell me that there's a change in the works, there's really no one in the village being there." And he said, "Well, there's no change, we've used all the money." And that was the end of our conversation.
We should know.
Then this morning, great. Then this morning, I get this phone call, and I thanked her profusely, and she said, "Actually, if you hadn't called us, we wouldn't even know about this."
The Safe Routs people said that.
She is the manager for the statewide Safe Routs to School.
What's her name?
Her name is Julie Walcoff, W-A-L-C-O-F-F. So, I thought that was interesting.
Did she mention the number of dollars, or just that?
Well, we had talked in the past couple of days, our conversations, she asked if we knew approximately how much money we were talking about. I explained to her that Gary had said it would be around ten thousand dollars. So she had a ballpark idea. She didn't seem real concerned about the amount. She said there's money left over in Safe Routs to School.
Statewide.
So, I thought that was very interesting. Anyway, we're just happy. We're happy it's going to be completed. I thanked her. I explained that our main concern is the safety issue here, and at least we'll know that it's going to be safe, it's going to end at the road, not in somebody's front yard. We're not going to have people falling off bikes and children in a state route highway. So, you know, I'm feeling very good about this.
Good job. It's very safe, I'm sure.
Thank you. Let's hope, yeah, you're right, Joe, until we see it in black and white. But remember that this is, this money is going to the township, it's not coming through us. She said they're going to give the money to the township to do this. Okay, so, and I intend to say things tomorrow night at their meeting in case they plan on doing something else with that. I'm sure they're not going to, too, because they know I've been in touch with her now and how she found out about it, and I've got to go.
Good job. Congratulations.
Anyone else have anything?
Court's scheduled jury trial October 20th for the Pavilion. Got a couple phone calls, following up on those. Also, I'd like to see, we need to address our rear setback for structures in R1 zoning. And the reason is, it currently stays twenty-four foot setback from the rear for accessory buildings. That means sheds are supposed to be twenty-four feet from the rear block line, which is not followed at all. I mean, you can walk up and down your street, and there isn't one that's farther than five feet away.
Maybe six or seven, yeah.
Exactly.
And it's one or two on the side.
Right, and it's just, I mean, it's not just your street. In your street, it's easy to see all the way down, there's a long, there's a long view.
And they're all in line.
Oh, yeah. So, the twenty-four foot has been just overrun, that portion of the zoning code, so it's really not even enforceable at this point.
Well, we, yours should be changed.
Yeah, it's totally a little... Okay, I'd like to see that happen.
Are you keeping a list there with all of these changes that are needed to the zoning code?
Uh, no, I'll be honest with you. When it comes to the zoning code, the only, so far, the only ones that we really need to address are fencing, and this rear setback is one that's come more recently. It hasn't been an issue in the past, from my perspective, but as you, when you tell someone it's a twenty-four foot setback, and they say, "Come on out and take a look at my neighborhood," and you see ten in a row that are all about five feet, you know, they're all about five feet from the rear, and it's, how do you, how do you enforce it? You just, you can't. It's unenforceable, it's been broken something times.
Why would they have the last twenty-four feet?
Um, it's, it's on the books.
It's funny you have that, and then the fencing has zero.
Right, true.
So you can actually put a fence right on your property?
Down the line.
It's what it says.
That's not good at all.
Yeah, the planning commission needs to address that, isn't it? It's going to be difficult, it's a story.
Fair enough.
That's taking a lot of our time. Oh, yeah.
Okay, I think I gave everybody a copy of the invitation for the 125th anniversary of Home Savings tomorrow night. I, maybe everybody got a copy of it, I do not know. But I, at downtown, there's dinner and so forth, everybody was invited. Did, did everybody, anybody get a copy of this?
Yes.
Yeah, I gave you a copy today, but, but Jim Charvelli called me, and I thought, "Whoa, well, you've got a copy of it."
Yes, I did.
But you can't go on it.
I can't.
Yeah, it's not real. So, if anybody likes to go, they'd be happy to have it. Everybody gets a copy. So I gave you all this information throughout. And the other thing I gave everybody is a copy of what Diorio says, was the solution to Albert.
He had no cost estimate on that.
Pardon me?
He had no cost. I saw no dollars on it, and it wasn't my cost to be...
Did I sign for, for what?
The cost of what he wants to do.
Albert?
Yeah.
No, no, I don't know. Because I was going to get my teacher from FBI to do the jobs.
So, is that the pretty flag?
I don't know, I can't promise that because I haven't gone out and talked to him yet, but he knows about this.
Is that the putting flag down on Elmer and Joe?
No, it gets, the letter's in there to taper, taper the driveway away from, away from the, I mean, the, you know, Albert, taper away from the, from the fellow's property and make a ditch, and then put any gravel or something down, you know, that's all. No paving.
Okay, but we're still spending tax pay or dollars, okay? So I think we need some more information on this. You were, you were here in the office the day Gary stopped in, he thought, he thought there was a meeting. He thought he had talked to you, Joe, and he thought there was a meeting last Tuesday night?
He left off that information that you have. And what he said to me is, the fact that the street...
Now, who, who's he?
Gary.
Oh, okay, yeah.
The fact that the street is on the county's GIs...
Yeah.
Doesn't mean that it was accepted by the village.
Uh-huh.
He says, "If it's not accepted by the village, then you have no responsibility."
Okay, but, but the whole thing is, Mark and Chris and myself went over there several times and looked at it, and the gentleman came, you know, a couple times, and the water runs down into the basement. So I don't know if we should do something or not. We all think we should do something.
Yeah, and the problem is, Joe, that if it's private property and we do something, we have no legal expenditure of public funds.
I did call the engineer, and we did state it's dedicated road.
They did say it was a dedicated road, huh?
Linda, I also talked to Page Nettie County Engineer.
Okay.
And he said to verify, you need to go to the recorder's office because they would have work.
Okay.
That's what he told me.
You know, I have a message, actually, that left it for me, and I don't, it may have been the recorder's office that...
Normal recording office?
Uh, no, no.
Because I was going to go, and I was, I was unable to get out of work to go, so I wound up in practice.
Yeah, and the thing that's so confusing about that street, I don't even think of it as a street, because it looks like where they, where it comes out on Johnson, it's a double lane.
Yeah.
And then it becomes a single lane. Well, what dedicated road is a single lane, no sewers, no, it could be without curbs, we've seen that happen before.
Phil Draper's in there, I don't think.
My Herring County GIs tax map, the office that called me back, and they said it's a dedicated street. So I, I think the recorder's office is under the recorder's...
Well, I think that they're under, in Nettie's office, but I'm not sure. But Nettie said there should be a record of it in the recorder's office because that's where all the records are.
And I would guess that the tax map folks would be the ones...
They would know for sure.
So, I'll play it for you, everyone, so you can...
Anthony, this is Edgar calling from Moline County GIs Tax Map Department. I returned your phone call yesterday regarding Albert Drive in Poland, and yes, this is a dedicated street. I'm not sure what other information you're looking for, but please reach us at three three oh, seven four oh, two four five five. Thank you.
That was on September 19th.
Okay, but Anthony, Albert runs all the way up to, you know...
The bridge up, they might be thinking of...
Of course, absolutely.
Correct, correct.
You need to check the piece between Albert and Johnson.
We want, we want to just that, that one part from Albert to Johnson place.
From Albert to Johnson.
Well, that's going to be confusing to them because they might think that it's the other section.
Absolutely.
I think if you request it as being the piece between Albert and Johnson place, there can't be any question, because that's the piece you're talking about.
All right, so at seven thirty, please say the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the world.
We'll call the members.
Mr. Cassatt.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Mr. Major.
Here.
Mrs. Cernick.
Yes.
Mrs. Yack.
Motion for president.
Motion to excuse councilmember Josh and Cassatt.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Acceptance of the minutes from the previous council meeting.
Make the motion, let it wait for reading, and there are three readings and accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Notifications of meetings and events to the public and news media, bloopers, will be before the next council meeting at six thirty, which is the 21st. Audience?
Um, we need to put together a meeting for the hospitalization of national health care, so if you could give me a schedule. That's next for finance, which will be placed by December 1st.
Legislation? Please? That was, that was supposed to be today, but today it isn't, it was canceled. Streets?
Third Tuesday of the month at six thirty.
Boards, ARB?
First Thursday every month, seven PM Village Hall.
Planning?
Wednesday the 15th at seven PM.
Boards, any appeals?
Nothing scheduled.
Western Reserve Fire District?
Tomorrow.
Yeah. And on the Forest Board?
Forest Board, fourth Tuesday at seven thirty.
And High Memorial?
Third Wednesday at two PM, in November.
No, actually, we're going to need, you know, so, we have, you know, we're seeing an add, we have, because we're at Christmas.
Oh, okay, we have it at Christmas. Okay, no, but we're going to do that in October, at two PM, right? At three, at three PM.
On the third Wednesday?
Third Wednesday, yep.
All right, report from mayor, a lot of stuff we touched already, the trick or treat hours, township meeting tomorrow at six o'clock. Joe talked about home savings, and then Lori Laflon gave me a couple upcoming events from the Poland Junior Women's Club. They will have their Poland Halloween Carnival on Saturday, October 25th, at the McKinley Cafeteria, beginning at one PM. And this is for children up through second grade accompanied by adults. And then, of course, the lighting of the village will be Saturday, December 6th, starting at five thirty. Activities at the Village Hall, Peterson Park, library, and a bunch of other lot of things going on, too. So, that's what's coming up from the Poland Junior Women's Club. And that is all I have, I believe. Motion to approve mayor's report, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Report from Fiskloss.
Okay, the only thing I have for this evening is the circulating of bills.
And report. Motion to approve Fiskloss's report, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And from Jeffrey Clark?
Um, yes. Just to be aware, the first meeting in November will be election day, so we'll...
All right, report from zoning administrator, Mr. Sponey.
Um, no real report.
Okay. Report from solicitor.
All right, there was stuff...
Please.
All right, first of all, I was notified that there was a petition that was committed to the village regarding Elk Creek Theater. And it stated that the folks who submitted the petition would request that the village of Poland reconsider their action regarding the pavilion. I heard the zoning administrator say that the matter admits that for jury trial, is that right? Okay. I did research on petitions and the obligation of the village council and the village to respond to the petition. The only thing that I could find regarding the petitions and any responsibility of the village is with regard to a referendum in response to an ordinance that was passed. As you remember, the ordinance that we had a little while ago that was put on with the referendum and it was voted down by the, by the public. There are requirements about how many signatures have to be validated, has to be submitted to the clerk and then down to the board of elections. I don't see any obligation with regard to this petition in anything that I found that would require the folks to act in any particular fashion, to consider it in any official way or to make any official statement or motion or ordinance or anything about it. In other words, the villagers, this group wishes to make the request for the council to reconsider it. You know, if anyone on the village council made a motion to reconsider it or made a motion to talk about it or do everything they wanted to do, then as a body, you would be obligated to act. But in response to a referendum, I have, it's my opinion, you're under no obligation to do anything.
What, what do you have in your hand there?
This is a copy of the petition that was submitted by, and I didn't count how many folks, but a good group number.
These are people who are in favor of what?
We, the loyal patrons of the Friday movies at Yellow Creek Theater, respectfully requesting the council, village, poll and reconsider their action regarding the pavilion at Yellow Creek Theater site with regard to the repairing setback ordinance. The pavilion enhances the quality of public place that has been used for the past ten years for an entirely public purpose. We believe that reconsideration will benefit the entire community and ensure the success of the movies at Yellow Creek Theater. It doesn't really request anything specific and in that council did not, in action of its own, bring this matter to, to struggle court. It was the zoning inspector who really did. Their request is improper on its face, but nonetheless, they are requesting.
But we directed him to do it.
I don't think so. You didn't pass a motion to require him to cite anyone or anything like that.
He obviously is there responsible for what he does.
You are responsible for the, how he adheres to his duties and if he would do anything above, outside of his scope of his duties and make sure that he does what the village.
But he obviously got our consent to do this.
I don't think he did. I don't think.
Sure, he doesn't require. Or is it required? You mean just did it on his own?
He acted autonomously in his capacity as zoning inspector.
I doubt that.
He's an enforcement officer, no less, similar to Russell.
Maybe before we bring out this action, I would think that he got our consent, our consent to do it.
I don't remember that he did this to him right now. I've been to most of the meetings, I think, all of them for a while, but he doesn't have to get your, now, if there was a particular, let's say, we use as an example, if you came and said, hey, that pavilion was built, shouldn't have been built that way, Mr. zoning inspector looked into it, he would look into it and he would have to decide on his own whether there's a violation of the law. And then he'd have to bring that information down to the, did you have to run that by Don Leo or not? You just filed that on your own?
Uh, no, filed that on my own. That was a zoning.
Just, just like any officer in the village, if they see someone speeding, it's their autonomy and their capacity, they're going to take it or not. You didn't authorize them to do that. You authorized them to do their job by hiring them and you authorized Dave to do his job, which is enforce zoning laws. But did you authorize him or direct him to do that? No, I don't think he did.
I can give you the timeline. On June seventeenth, we had an architecture review board meeting and he came in and asked to get a zoning permit to do this and we said no. So this all started in architecture review board.
Yes.
That's where it started.
I was there and we told him how to do it, told him to help work with us, be patient. Next day, he builds it. So, so I think, you know, like I said, Dave, Dave acted in his capacity correctly. Village council did not direct or, or, or bound by, why should I say bound by? They didn't direct him to do that and you're not bound to respond to the, to the petition. Just like in your capacity as, as council members, you do get feedback from the community all the time. You know, hey, Joe, what you looking at this? You know, Linda, I need you to help me with that. And then you bring it to a meeting and then council decides if they want to act upon or consider it. If anyone wants to, to consider this as a council member or have the village council consider it, you could do that, but are you bound to do anything to kind of submit this petition?
I think it's a distinction that's different. I mean, he, obviously, we all knew he was going to do it. He'll be okayed and I think that's the end of the story, the result.
Who, who okayed him?
I think we all did.
No, we're not.
No, no, no. Didn't we know that? We didn't know that?
No.
We got told us to do it.
First of all, Dave, who knows what this is in relation to the setback? Do you know?
I have walked it, I've actually measured it with a walking wheel.
Good.
Four times. Okay? I have looked at it on the tax map and used the scale. In the ordinance, it is the, it is responsibility of the person who's building the structure to get it surveyed to determine whether they are in or are not in the repairing setback. Clearly states that.
Okay, is he in?
Not by my account.
How much is he in?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
He's in there?
Yes, he is.
He is in?
Approximately twenty feet.
Twenty feet. Okay. Now we know because there's been a lot of discussion about this.
Um, he's been told to get.
Is he in or is he not?
He's been told to get a survey.
Yeah.
His attorney's been.
He has not done that.
That's.
He would have it with a wheel.
Yeah, but I'm not a surveyor.
Yeah.
He was, it says in the ordinance that he is required to get a professional surveyor to survey the.
But don't forget, part of, part of the problem here is that he built it without a, a building permit.
Without a barium, so, and building permit.
Correct. So, so there's so many violations going on here and he's the enforcement officer. Okay? And less than a police officer giving a ticket?
There's a difference.
We don't, we don't tell the police officers when or when's on.
There's a big difference. Two situations, apples and oranges.
No.
Well, just for, for, for your sake, for council member's sake, it's my opinion as your solicitor, that you need to do nothing in response to this petition that was submitted to the building.
What is this petition asking?
Reconsider.
Asking us not to enforce the law?
No, no, they're just asking to reconsider your action. Asking this village council to reconsider their action and I say that there is no action by village council to reconsider.
What action is he speaking of then?
I don't know.
Turn, turn that thing down.
Or sing the law. Does this violate Army Corps of Engineers too if it's a repairing setback for us? How about Ohio Department of Transportation? Does it violate anything for them?
But we, they were notified of this and I was underneath the bridge, that's, you know, and I had to be certain things and they were going to come out and do all kinds of stuff and they never did. I was, I talked to them and I thought they were going to do something and they did not. That's okay. But, you know, clearly, my opinion, and they, he violated our ordinance and our requirements for variances and our requirements for building when he was cited accordingly. Like I said, the, the request is from the, the folks to, for council to reconsider their action. It's my opinion, there was no action to reconsider. It was, it was the zoning inspector's enforcement of the codes that led to the citation, which, you know, I, I wouldn't ask them to reconsider it even if they wanted it, him to.
Isn't it awesome if Struthers is going to determine whether it comes out or not?
Ultimately, it's going to be a jury that's going to determine.
Yeah, so not us, we're not saying whether we think that or not.
Right. So, so just my opinion, because I did want to make sure that we had no obligation to do anything in response to the petition and you don't. That's, that's my official plea.
How many names were on there?
You know, I just, I didn't, I didn't count them, Mr. Major, I will before we leave. I'm going to guess about fifty.
Wow.
Fifty, sixty, seventy, probably short of a hundred, but, but I'm going to guess around a hundred.
Which might not even be residents from the village of Poland.
Yeah, and, and even for a petition for, for you to reconsider anything or for you to consider, even for the one that, that was done, see here, it is, I need the number a minute ago, percentage of the, of the total electorate. Here we go. Ten percent of the number of electors who voted for the governor at the most recent general election through the office of governor in municipal corporation. So it'd be ten percent of how many people voted for governor?
Four years.
Four years ago.
That's for, that's for reference, so that's.
Right. Even if, even if by that standard, you know, it's great when people are interested in that they fall short of their legal requirements, on the fair space. So that's with regard to the petition. I did comply with the request that was made before public records that was done. I believe that two days after I received it, that's done. I've heard nothing more. And then finally, we got something from, uh, council members about a year ago, maybe nine months. We were notified that we may be participating in class action lawsuits with regard to municipal derivatives that were, that were, and we were part of. Uh, it's been approved with Morgan Stanley, Marchovia, J P Morgan, Bank of America. A lot of money. Six point five million for Morgan Stanley, thirty seven million from Marchovia, forty four million for J P. And we have to submit a proof of claim. Let's see here. It does not, it does have the requirements as to how you are qualified or not and, and I mentioned this in the past, I don't know anything about this. So if, if we can, these were derivatives sold from nineteen ninety two to two thousand eleven. So if we bought anything from nineteen ninety two to two thousand eleven, we may be participating in it. The, the deadline file, the claim is January thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen. This is the form, so I would, I would give this to someone who might, who probably.
Nineteen ninety two, two thousand and eleven, we had a sweep account during that time. And our sweep account was reinvested every twenty four hours by the bank. They were not permitted to put our money into derivatives and then this all came out that they were putting money in derivatives.
We may have a good claim.
We may have.
So, so I, I'll pass the form and then I'll look at it before it's submitted. Yeah, we have a few months, but the quicker you give it, the better. He passed that one, so I'm ready, please. I had to make copies, so if you want to make copies, whenever you're done. And then the final thing that Mr. Benedict passed me is contract. This is for the building frame?
Yep, here.
Here, sorry. For the decorations and lights. And this is the M I Os in Pennsylvania. Okay. Six hundred dollars. Okay, are there any requirements from purchasing or bids? If it's six hundred, is there an amount that we have to, is it a thousand that we have to then bid it? Is that right?
Twenty five thousand.
Twenty five thousand.
Close, close.
Yes.
All right, Benedict, if, if, if we're under the, we, we're well under, then it looks fine to me. Uh, the only thing that, like, for future years, up and down, will be six hundred unless display. I want to make sure that there's nothing, that we got caught in with the one ranger thing. Make sure there's nothing about future findings. It doesn't have a time, a timeframe. Contract meant the parties. The only thing I would quit, and I'll write it on here before we're done, but this is not the original.
It is.
Oh, it is?
So that's the copy I got.
Is there a severability part there?
Yeah, there should. And also, that this is a one, a one time thing. We'll lay, it's still on lay on the number three, but it's been, um, future years, up and down, will be six hundred unless display is increasing in size.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, do you have the original?
That's the one I got. I made a copy of that.
Okay. All right, what I'm going to do is just add a couple of notes and then, then the village mayor can initial where I made the notes and opt the initial, but they agree the different terms as well. And then I would say we can.
So we should or should not make a motion to enter that contract tonight?
We can't. Yes, I'll with my, my.
With the modification. Okay. So did you want to ask about the, was it the workers comp in Pennsylvania as opposed to Ohio?
Yeah, Laurie's going to check to make sure that their, their workers compensation insurance is.
We've got, it's all in an email to them now, so as soon as I find out, I will let you know. You know, is that good or?
Yeah, so should we enter, should we enter this contract?
We need it in Ohio.
Eight?
I'm sorry?
We need workers comp in Ohio.
Yeah.
He's, he's located in Pennsylvania.
Is he in Ohio?
I don't know, actually. I don't know. Why do you think we did? Probably not.
Well, I was just thinking, he's working, he's, you know, working here.
Yeah, you know. Um, Ohio and Pennsylvania do not have reciprocity when it comes to workers compensation. So if you're going to work in one, you've got to have coverage.
I'll put a clause showing proof of how, of how to work.
He's got it, um, if you flip to the second page, he's got his assurance.
Yes, but it doesn't specify.
It doesn't, it just says, uh, his company and the liability amount.
And then workers comp, but it doesn't say where.
Right.
Okay, I'll put a requirement in Ohio.
Right, and workers comp in Ohio is done by the state. Um, in Pennsylvania, it's actually sold through insurance agents, which is totally, it's a totally different system.
So he should be able to price a copy of his certificate from Ohio.
Absolutely.
That's what we want.
Yeah, you've got to have.
We want a copy of the certificate.
So is this a deal breaker? If he can't provide this, then.
He falls out of the bucket, or in trouble.
Right.
I'm sorry, the eleven fifty is twelve, it's two plus one fifty for a week, so max fourteen hundred, correct?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so I would just make a motion up to fourteen hundred provided.
Oh, question.
Yes.
At six hundred a year, now, do we want to put a limit up for up to five years?
When you say six hundred a year?
That, that's to take the decorations down and store them and then put them back up.
Are you saying after this is done and then they'll charge six hundred to take it down as well?
Yes, and then put it up next year.
So it'll be.
Oh, no, no, they, they won't charge us six hundred this year. That's, the initial fourteen hundred is for five decorations, put them up, keep them going throughout the holiday season, take them down, and then six hundred a year thereafter to come and put them back up and maintain.
I don't think that's binding. I don't think it can be because you can't enter, enter into a future contract, um, you know, a year from now. Council will have to, will have to agree to that.
Every year?
You can't, you can only, yeah, you can only make a contract within a calendar year or four calendar year, I, I would say. Um, but the other thing that's a bit confusing, I don't know, a little more, it has party one agrees to and a party two agrees to, but everything seems to be done by party one, so, do you see that?
Yeah, he's not a great contractor.
Yeah.
Or we concluded that.
Yeah, so, um, we'll work on this a little bit.
But you want to take time to analyze this a little bit?
Like, how quickly do we want to have this?
Well, his date for putting our, this, these decorations up are November third, so we've got.
Okay, why don't I work on a contract and bring it next time?
Tell you what, could you get it to me and then I'll get it to Laurie and then Laurie will get it to him and then we'll have. will get it to him, and then we'll have.
Or could you work with him directly?
Yeah, sure.
I thought his contact information would be, you know. He said, you know, I can give that to you. So if you talk to him, because I think it will get lost in Pennsylvania.
No problem.
But we got to prove this first.
That's nice. You're a good idea. Listen, let's do it next meeting. That'll give us two more weeks.
As long as he's got the workers' comp in Ohio. If he doesn't, then I'll.
Right, right, I'll let you know.
Okay. Oh, you will, okay. All right.
I'll call him tomorrow.
Oh, okay, let me get, can I put his name?
Sure.
Bruce, Bruce, I'm going to show you how, thanks.
Okay, that's all I have.
Tony, can I just bring up something?
Yeah.
Have you been involved in this Poland historic preservation of the villages proposing?
I have not. I've had people contact me.
I've had a lot of people contact me, and I think we're buying a big lawsuit in this case. I think certain elements of this is unconcentration, stake in property without due process, and I'd like you to take a look at it. I think we're buying a huge lawsuit on this, and it's not worth it for our little village.
But if I know, if I know the folks in our community are not, you know, assess them pretty good, that's going to mean a lot of, with a lot of trepidation. A lot of people are calling me, how can you affect my rights to my property? And I, and I don't know a lot about that, I'll be honest with you. I have not researched it at all.
I've done a little research, and I think it's subject to constitutional challenge.
On its face, it, it's interesting to me that you can make laws that would direct how people can handle their property, because that's one of the rights, other than free speech and, you know, constitutional rights against, you know, unlawful gelling and stuff like that, it's very protected, our property rights. And how you can make laws that would limit or direct those folks. I don't understand how it can happen. I know it's happened. I know a lot of towns and villages have homeowner associations and historic preservation ordinances. I don't know that they've been challenged, I don't know how extensive they are, but I do know that no matter what they come up with out of their committee, that I will research it and look at it in detail, and then advise council on what I think before you do anything. But it has to be very narrowly tailored, very limited scope, and very delicate on how they are telling folks what they can and can't, because my home, for instance, you know, is going to be restored for too long, and, you know, I don't want people necessarily telling me how I can paint or, you know, or what.
I mean, it limits the sale of buildings, people's houses, young people commending. These houses are by water street, this smaller type houses there. You're going to limit people coming in by them, instead of hindering the process in this village of people coming into the village regardless of these requirements. And I'm sure if we ever pass something, which I hope we don't, it's certainly subject to a referendum, which it is, referendum, which it is.
And I'm sure, like I said, how active our electorate is, I'm sure that it's going to have to go through the random report, everybody's inactive. But on the flip side, they do have value in that they do protect homes and buildings that otherwise might even be torn down, or might be, you know, remodeling in a way that loses the character. The reason I even know about it at all, I was in Savannah a couple of years ago, and there was this great home that, I forget what, how the president stayed there, and all these different things that have happened there. And they had torn it down, and they built in nineteen seventy-four by this bank. And it, it looks as odd as it sounds in Savannah, you know, built a bank built in nineteen seventy-four right in this beautiful historic mansion, home that it was. After that happened, they put these ordinances in place, and that can't happen again in Savannah, you know, they protect these older buildings. So there's value to them in a certain faction, but, but you have to walk that line.
Looking at our values, I mean, we put in Walgreens and took down, I believe, some historic structures on that corner. That was an old, blind buildings in there. So our village has, in a sense, put in a modern Walgreens.
Walgreens?
And sort of discouraged the people from really moving into our village. I think you should involve this, because people are in an uproar about this, let me tell you, and they're yelling at me, what are you guys doing?
Yeah, I was not going to until if anything came out of that, that committee. If anything came out of the committee to be presented to council, and it's on job, me, I thought to, to review it. You know, I know Michael has been overseeing it and whatnot. So I didn't get involved with it, but whatever council wants me to do, I'll do it. I kind of wait to see if, nothing may come out of it at all, or something may come out that you want me to check the legality.
Well, the people who were against it, I haven't been involved in, in the committee, or have you had meetings about?
Planning Commission is pretty much totally devoted to that.
But are you inviting people who are against it?
Oh, yeah, I've had a third public meeting, which is the last time, and there will likely be more.
But I mean, as I said in the last meeting, none of us here are involved in it, we don't have houses there. I think we're affecting a lot of people in this village unnecessarily, worrying them about their property rights. And I think we should be warned what we're doing, actually.
Well, I think that we definitely, you know, council should be involved in the process at some point, and will be if it comes out of there and it's brought to you to. You're under an obligation from, from planning.
Oh, I know.
If they pass it, or if they, you know, approve something, enact it, you just have to consider, have public hearings on it. And I think that it might last me at one point, if you have public hearings in it or later, if it's about, why not, you know, and you get a good sense of where, what a community stands. So, so, you know, I like to say, do whatever you want me to do. I think it's.
And I think, I don't think it's really appropriate for our village, because that's not the main section of our village. You have to get into that area and see where all these houses are. People don't, they come through our village, they don't see that area at all, it's as though it's a major thoroughfare. I think it's unnecessarily new history in our village, and I think we're going to destroy some of the harmony in this village when we pass it.
Well, it'll probably be covering out Planning Commission, probably the next month. I would say another meeting or two, and it'll, it'll be Planning Commission, I think it's finalized form.
Well, I think you're going to, you're buying a lawsuit here, too. There's going to be a lawsuit against us, and we're going to be involved.
Well, there's hundreds upon hundreds of municipalities and communities in Ohio alone that have historic preservation.
It's just not sufficient for our village, I don't know why it started. A few years ago, it was defeated, I think you were around, Joe, when they, they tried this about fifteen or twenty years ago, and it got defeated. So now you're bringing out, you know, the old trash again. I think you better be careful what you're doing.
Okay, we're going to be, honestly, I'd like to look at it.
Unnecessarily.
The public has opportunity, and the public will have its opportunity, and it's going to follow the process. Who, who initiated this thing? Michael Thompson, Thompson was the individual that suggested it, and Planning Commission proved, and it ended up developing, and in developing legislation, a subcommittee was put together to study it, and they've given their suggestion.
And why do you want it for our village?
It's obvious. The plot behind it is to protect historic sites.
Who was always taking a people's property to do that?
I mean, it's.
Limiting their property.
I really don't want to get in that argument now, because, because it's just a part of the zoning code, it's, it will become no less requirements that, just like any other zoning, you know, structures.
Absolutely different.
Chefs need to be here, fences need to be here.
Absolutely different point of view. I mean, it's absolutely, it's affecting people's houses where they live.
Which is like any other zoning law, it affects their houses and properties.
Unnecessary for this village.
Well, you know, zoning, yeah, we don't even argue about it now, because, you know, zoning, everybody needs zoning. If your neighbor violates a zoning, a zoning law, and then, and then you run to council or run to the zoning administrator, now I want, I want enforcement. Well, it'll be common, it'll be common, we'll have our opportunity. And my question, the, you see the email that Linda sent out with that information regarding?
Sorry, one o'clock in the morning. My OCD was kicking in low.
It was quite lengthy and very, very detailed.
It's the timeline of how it all happens, and the second inspection report.
And we.
One o'clock in the morning.
I'll tell you what.
It's rather long.
And this is the original inspection that started it all.
Okay. Just remind me, please, what am I, what am I writing them about? I kind of remember these, make sure I have it right.
Explaining to them that they need to pay bills that were, it came about due to the less than in code workmanship.
Right.
That, that occurred, and it was done without permission.
Okay. All right, what I'll do is I'll draft it, send it out to everybody, and then you can follow me, give them, even make corrections, then I'll put it on our letterhead.
So how did you want to handle it? Were you going to just give them the invoice, the, Lori is giving one invoice?
I've already given them the one invoice, the original. I did not give them the second one, which that will have to be explained in the letter as well. Original invoice of three hundred and.
Twenty.
And the second one, a hundred and fifty, I believe.
That one's coming? The second invoice is coming?
Second invoice we already have, but so now, the next question is how to handle the last part that needs to be taken care of.
So we want three things. We want payment for both invoices and payment for the amount of fix that they have.
But no, those, those were the fix. The only thing that needs to be done yet is.
Is going to be a bigger bill. Did you get to that point where, actually, it's the very first part of the email where I quote a part of his email, and what he says needs to be done, and what is to done to actually fix it, and they need to, they need to.
About the piping, there was not.
They need to take the wires out from, off our property, and they need to put the wires on their property if the school wants it. That's their issue, not ours anymore.
Yeah.
So they need to remove all that stuff from our property.
Is that in, in here, Linda?
Mm-hmm. It's in.
And so is anything that you have questions about?
Yeah, feel free to call me.
Okay.
Yeah, Linda, you worked with Dicky Moore towards the end there of that later thing?
Yeah, because I said originally, well, maybe we should just have you guys take care of it. And he said, well, here's the thing, it's going to be a bigger bill. He said, you shouldn't be the ones paying for this, you didn't put it there, they did. They should remove this from your property.
And the one thing that's, that we need to take care of is the additional topsoil.
Right.
Because that was from the original installation.
Right. Yeah, so we do need it.
And Russ is also going to take care of it.
Okay, then as soon as that's done, if you let me know, I'm going to call him and tell him, because it's, that's in the cost of what we paid with a hundred and fifty. He's going to schedule the county to come out and do the inspection, and then we'll be at least liability free of, you know, we've done our due diligence on what we needed to do. So, I mean, I don't, I don't know if they offer to take care of it.
Originally, they do.
Want them to do it, remove the stuff that we're saying, or do we just have you to do it?
Last time we had, we allowed them to do anything to train them to, again, the workmanship is.
That's exactly.
Way, way lower.
So, I mean, I would just assume we schedule it with Dicky, and then we send them a third bill?
Yeah.
But see what you.
You sent them a letter that there's additional work that will need to be done, so we're going to involve the original invoice, the second invoice, there will be a third one.
This is to. They need to remove the pipes next to ours, take them up, move them to their property, that's the thing you're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I don't, do we want it, because there's a dilemma, is you almost have to give them a chance to cure the defect, but we don't want them doing it if the same person's going to do what they did the first time.
Well, like Bill said, when we gave them that second chance, they still didn't fix it.
That's what I'm thinking, maybe we just do and have them paid for it. I don't know, let me think about that. Okay.
I think you have to give notice before you.
You have to let us do it?
I think you'd have to give notice that you're going to have it done, so they're unaware of it.
Yeah. Yeah. But then, we're in a situation where we gave them a chance one time, and they messed it up, do we have to give them another chance?
I agree with Bob, though, I think that he needs to be made aware of the additional.
That there's another bill coming?
Or that they can hire someone not the person who did it the first time.
Right.
That's something that we are okay with, that maybe we mutually agree to.
Okay, most of the proof, the solicitor's report. Paul Dever, who goes, you exceed the respect. Pro from chief of police and street commissioner.
Anthony, what's a lawyer?
He loves to talk.
I do have a report, however, Paul isn't here, and it, I don't, I don't want to give it to you verbally. I'll, I'll include it in next month's report.
But we are going with the slag, salt coated?
Already picked up two loads today.
By the way, that's a town piece. I don't know if you caught the article in the paper, that ODOT is buying, I don't know how many hundreds of thousands of tons from an Indiana company to help cover the rest of the counties and states, but they're, they're offering it like a hundred and five thousand per ton, and it's just going to the counties.
We, I spent an hour and a half on the phone with Morgan trying to get some kind of answer from him. They wouldn't tell me how much, and they wouldn't tell me if they would even allow us to purchase salt from, until they said they'd let us know sometime the end of October. Well, I can't wait till the end of October to find out. We don't have any alternatives, so I think we did the best thing we can do.
I tried to, to beg some from the county, to see if they were going to get some of that from ODOT, if we could shed in on it, and it was funny, because the supervisor from the road department there that I talked to, he said, we're not getting that, he said, we haven't even been told by ODOT that we're getting that. He said, we're getting this new material that's like gravel covered in salt, which is exactly what Russ was looking at, from the same vendor as well.
The county, I use New Milltown as, as example, if New Milltown has no storage facility, they would go to the county, purchase salt, and they would go out every time they needed salt to a county outpost, load the truck, and come and spread it in New Milltown. The county told them, not this year, they're not providing you with even the option of purchasing salt from us. So it's, it's going to be entertaining as this shakes out, I think.
Are we interested in the B juice thing to go with this stuff, or what the county's going to do?
I, I don't have any way of spreading it.
Expensive equipment to buy?
I would think it'd be very expensive to buy. And if we were going to do that, I would probably look at, if I could find somebody with the equipment, I mean, I think that would be an alternative, but I think that's pretty expensive. I think it's a cost, I'm sure it is cost prohibitive for us to buy it, but, I mean, if it was avail, if it was available, I mean, obviously, we would spray it over our own purchase to enhance its salt capabilities, but I, I don't think that's anything we can afford to do. Yeah, that's what they tell you, you know, we have brine, we have beet juice, we have this and that, but they put it down with huge trucks, they have huge trucks that they use. We, we don't have that ability.
If this is going to be an ongoing thing every year, I mean, this isn't going to be temporary, you know, so I won't.
Well, I, I don't understand, and this is just my, okay, say we have a short, shortage of salt, a genuine shortage of salt. What has happened that they can come to us and tell you, last year was forty-one bucks, I was, I was told it's going to be a hundred and forty-eight dollars a share a ton? What, what has happened that's going to make it go from forty-one dollars a ton to a hundred and forty-eight dollars a ton?
Supply and demand.
Yeah, it's called price gouging, as far as I'm concerned, same way with oil.
Yeah, I mean, there's really no way to know what happens up there.
Well, I mean, if somebody that sat down and decided, we're, we don't have as much, so we're going to charge you this much money. That's not right.
Okay. Are we liable if we don't take care of the roads? Anthony?
I think so.
We're in trouble.
Yeah.
We're going to get people to work if they can't pay taxes.
And school. Well, I, I have some salt, I have a little bit stocked out from last year, and with this stuff, and I talked to Nick about making some adjustments, because we, we've also hit the street budget really hard this year for hot patch, and, and I still get complaints every day about holes, but we had to cut back because of all, of what we spent filling holes because we didn't pay this year. I mean, we're, that's pretty ugly right now, and we're doing what we can to try and work around it, but I got, I think I got twenty-two tons today, our guys went.
At what price?
Thirteen dollars and fifty cents a ton.
That's not salt, Joe.
That's not salt.
That's the gravel that we're talking about.
It's a, it's a very finely ground gravel, and it's sprayed, it's sprayed with brine, which is what the state uses. When, when you see their trucks coming through spraying, that's what they're spraying with.
How do our trucks distribute this?
They'll spread it just like, just like salt.
Yeah.
In fact, it's, I think it's finer than, not, I think it is finer than salt. And hopefully, here we're, we're trying, just like everybody else is, hopefully it works.
When you put the brine on?
When you put the brine on?
The brine's put on by them, sprayed by them.
It don't evaporate or anything like that? It hardens, huh?
No, it shouldn't.
That don't sound good.
It shouldn't harden if it's sprayed with brine. Hopefully, it won't freeze. And I was up there looking today when Tim was bringing the loads in and I think we can spread it. I think it'll work.
Well, it's what the county's gonna use, so it doesn't like... They are feeling pretty confident about it.
And I wanted to hurry up and get on board there before they said, "Well, I think the county's buying..."
All of it.
Yeah, I think they're buying, I forget how many thousand tons of it. So, I wanted to hurry up and get in a little bit. And I'm gonna get New Milltown involved, too, and they can stockpile our place, so...
So, when you use beet juice, do you end up with red rose in the spring?
No, it's not really red.
Or have to see the wizard?
It's more of a dirty brown color.
I guess we're gonna have a messy weather.
Yeah.
It makes sense to be a messy weather.
Yeah, this is gonna be... Well, it's all right. We'll get through it and we'll fix it and do what we have to do.
Good question. Who don't have impound blocks?
Street guys.
Our guys did that?
Yeah. In the past week, they completely rebuilt the roof on the salt bank.
Hard working.
Two things with those guys, those guys work hard. And those guys have so much work, we open them all the time. That's why we're really not incompetent when I say, "Make sure and call and remind me." It's just every single day, something new is added that becomes a priority. And it's... I've been trying, I tried to get that impound built all summer. And finally, we just quit doing something else. And that's, it's just, we're always, always, always behind. Always behind, always. We do what we can and it gets us in trouble sometimes, but we're always behind, always behind. A lot of work there.
Motion to a passion report from the state senate.
Yes, ma'am. All in favor? Any opposed? A report from engineer?
Nothing.
Reports to outstanding committees of council, finance, wage, audit, and insurance?
Nothing to report.
Legislation and policy?
Uh-uh.
Police and fire?
Nothing.
Streets, sidewalks, and drainage?
Nothing. We discussed that.
I'm sorry, I missed something.
She said, "I'm sorry."
Hi, finance. I just wanna say, I don't know how many voters we have here tonight. But if you are a voter, please make sure that you vote for the levy for Pollan Village if you live in the village. It's a renewal levy, three point two mils. That means it's not an increase in taxes. And we need that money desperately in order to give services. That means police and streets and all the things that we depend on to have a village operate. So, consider that and tell your parents to please vote for it as well. Thanks.
Buildings, lanes, utilities, car circulation?
Nothing.
Reports from board, planning commission?
Yeah, we met. And it was just a continuation of the public input of the historic preservation legislation and working on implementing the public suggestions. That was it.
Backing?
All in favor? Any opposed? Architecture review board?
We met on October 2nd. We discussed a new sign for one-on-one self-made precision orthodontics.
Motion to approve the report?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Missed Board of Zoning Appeals?
Well, you got my note that Mr. Mustriani has stopped his application to put those duplexes on Riverside, so I think that'd be the end of the case.
That'd be pretty good. Hey, you're amazing.
Motion to approve the report?
Nothing.
All in favor? Any opposed? Forest board? Hyde Memorial?
Nothing.
And...
Do you have the plan? I had the layout for the sewer. Do you have it?
I've never seen it.
Oh, okay.
Want to reserve fire district?
No.
Reports from special committees? Communications from residents? Any new business?
I'm a new business thing. Anthony, we were talking about this, whether Alveron is dedicated or not. Do you know what the definition of a dedicated street is?
I don't.
I have such a really hard time getting a grip on this, how we can call a single lane a dedicated road.
I'll try to give you an answer real quick, maybe.
Isn't Audubon Lane two lanes? Two vehicles can go through it?
No.
It's a single lane also, that's a private road?
Private road.
It may have been dedicated and just not finished.
You're talking about Alveron, right?
The right of way would be the... If you look at how that wide intersection is, I would assume that that's how the road was supposed to be, just never been finished. So, it may be two lane road as...
It's like that section is shared road, it's a walking path. Actually, that's a dedicated street.
Right.
So, what makes it dedicated?
Well, we were talking about this earlier. Comment was made, was the road ever accepted? So, I think when you build a development, you say, "Okay, Pollan Village, here's a development." And we say, "Okay, builder, we accept it." And by accepting that, you accept the roads, the sewers, the sidewalks, everything that goes with it.
From the development?
As a process you do.
And then you have to file with the county, right? Right.
So...
And I would think that if you say, "You take Alveron, you take all of it."
Yeah, interesting that taxman department called me. And that's...
And so, who would the filing be with? Who did you say engineer told you?
Engineer said that he said to contact Mahoney County Recorder's Office.
Recorder's Office.
And that they would have, that they may have records of it. He said, "Did you check in your records?" And I said, "Well, we need to know what year the development was built before we can go back and even look into our stuff. That's why we started with you." And he said, "Well, go check with her because she might be able to lead you down the road."
Okay, that's a good idea.
I could, if you would like, I could go over there.
Why don't you do that then? Because theory also said that to you, that you need to look in the village's records to see if it was ever actually accepted.
At some point, something would have had to been filed with the county to make that part of the drainage or whatever, water lines, sewer lines, everything. She... He... That was the first thing he said. "I looked, it's on our GIS, we'll call it quarter."
Now, those homes, from where Ken's house is down, those were built later, correct? The first ones...
On Johnson Place or...
On Johnson Place?
Yeah, I think they're... Yeah, they're new.
They're newer, starting with his home, going down to the end of the street?
I'd be guessing, but I believe so.
Just to try to get an idea of where to even look, timing-wise, in village records?
I would say if you look at, just pick an address on Alveron, the map, Finnish Street, and look at a year that they built it, that would be a...
I think it was built probably just prior to North Elementary School, which I believe was...
It was probably around fifty-six, but yeah.
I think if you just picked one of those houses, you would have the construction. That would give you a baseline number to start looking at.
I'm looking, see if I can find anything.
Are you trying to make a distinction between restricted and dedicated and undedicated that we don't do anything?
Well, in... Yeah, whether or not it actually is a private road or whether it's actually been an accepted road by the village.
And you gotta tell them that we're not gonna do anything because of that?
If it's a private road?
Why? Why not?
Because we can't use taxpayer money on private property.
Why not?
Because we can't, it's an illegal expenditure.
I don't see why.
I think the other issue, not only whether it's legal or not, is if you use it on one private property and other folks have issues with theirs, when do you, where do you stop? You know, how do you... You know, it's hard enough to prioritize the public route we have in the village, not just the village. You know, how then do you start prioritizing who needs work on a private road or whatnot? I think that's a dangerous precedent.
You can do that, but it has to benefit the... It has to be a benefit to the community and more.
Yeah. I mean, we're proud of Audubon Lane, it runs a private road.
That's not necessarily a benefit to the hungry or...
That's a benefit for one street.
So, dedicated road is just, you know, it's not a law that it's like the legal. Dedicated road is usually considered as one that a municipality has accepted for public purposes and normally implies that the municipality has agreed to maintain the thing. Usually, if the municipality accepts subdivision type, the municipality has accepted the roads. All that dedicated really means is that the land where the roadway is located was offered for public use by the subdivision and accepted by the municipality.
And accepted by the municipality.
So, you know, in answer to the question, if Alveron is dedicated, that would imply by their answer, at some point in the line, Pollan Village accepted it as a dedicated road.
But that's Alveron. That's from...
But that is named Alveron. And I would think that when you accept Alveron, you accept it from the Sheridan Road down around the corner to Johnson Place, because it's the same name. So, just because it wasn't finished, you know what I mean?
There's a street sign there?
No, but it's Alveron if you look on the maps. Alveron, if you're Sheridan Road to Johnson Place, it's shaped like this.
Because once you leave the paved area of Alveron?
It's still Alveron.
It looks like it's not even road anymore.
Right, but it's still named Alveron.
Bob, you mentioned Audubon Lane.
Yeah, here it comes.
How does that work? These guys put a gate up on the... How they do... What's going on there?
Joe, I have to say, I agree with you on this one. Why did they ever got the gate?
Yeah.
To be honest, I said... I wasn't around.
How did they put that gate up there?
I wasn't around. I thought you gave them the okay.
Not me. Oh, that gate, that gate was there when I was six years old.
When they put it there to stop traffic?
Sure, they don't like the traffic. But who said they had to put that gate up there? Is that a dedicated road? Audubon Lane?
You can get through, but vehicles can't... It's dedicated, it's a shared road.
They all owned it.
Every homeowner owns a piece of that road. Every homeowner, when they buy a home back there, owns another piece of that road.
That was the buffalo land. They put the houses on the buffalo land. But they... So, the road was a private road, retained a private road.
But I agree with you, the gate is offensive.
Nothing weird about that.
There was a gate.
You're a little messing around.
There was a gate on that section of Alveron at one time.
He used to close it in the wintertime, I believe, so it was...
Right, and the whole police chief used to open it in the wintertime just to get the snow piles through there. And then he used to lock it after winter was over, so that nobody could traffic that area. Now, it's open all the time. And you have, what, garbage trucks? Everybody using that?
What are you talking about?
I've never seen anybody on Alveron.
We've never seen anybody on it.
I've seen people walking on it, but never any vehicles.
So, do you know whether they have garbage trucks going up and down that? That's...
Yeah, they could go up and down. They couldn't before, I've never seen it. They had this backhouse and all that stuff within it.
I haven't even seen her... Buses don't go down there?
Buses don't?
We'll figure out if you have to do that.
Any other new business? Any old business? Motions, ordinances, and resolutions?
Okay, I'm making a motion to enter in a contract with DeMatteo's One and Land Scapeing to exceed twelve hundred and fifty dollars for initial installation of Christmas decorations and six hundred dollars for the following year with the modifications noted by a solicitor.
That's labor and material. That includes the lights?
Fourteen light. Twelve hundred and fifty dollars for the initial installation maximum and six hundred dollars for the following year.
I'm actually not gonna put that part in. I'm just gonna put in the part about twelve fifty, up to twelve fifty, plus one fifty for the reap, maximum fourteen hundred dollars. Part about the six hundred dollars, we're just gonna have to remember that. That's what they agreed to do it for, if they wanted to do it. But I don't think that we can bind the village to future, any futures.
Just fourteen hundred dollars.
Yeah. Which I'll make sure that I... I'll make a whole contract to clarify what they'll be doing. It's everything you said, other than the six hundred dollars, take it up and put it down next year.
Up to fourteen hundred. Up to fourteen hundred. DeMatteo?
De... DeMatteo. Capital M, A-T-T-E-O.
Your motion seconded, ma'am?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Other motions, ordinances, or resolutions?
And I can make a resolution to honor James Stewart for distinguished accomplishments and recognition as a professional and community leader and to recognize him and express congratulations to him as the recipient of the Pollan Schools Foundation Alumni of the Year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Take the next one.
Do you want me to do all of them?
Yeah.
A resolution to honor Sue Van Leeder for distinguished academic contributions and meritorious service to the Pollan Schools and to recognize her and express congratulations to her as the recipient of the Pollan Schools Foundation Educator of the Year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And the third one is a resolution to honor Anthony Safera for distinguished accomplishments and recognition as a professional and community leader and to recognize him and express congratulations to him as the recipient of the Pollan Schools Foundation Alumni of the Year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any other motions, ordinances, or resolutions? Second, third reaps. Presentation of the bills. Motion to approve the bill? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You should have a higher voice.
Tim, do we have to set trick-or-treat hours?
Oh, you can set.
Yeah, I mean, do we need to make a motion to that?
We always do.
All right.
When do you wire for?
Saturday, November 1st, four to six.
Make a motion to full trick-or-treat hours on Saturday, the first of November? Oh, my gosh. From four to six P.M.?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
How do we get that out to the people?
Uh, do they know about it? There's gonna be articles in paper and...
And then we call Pollan's.
Yeah.
So, we call Pollan's.
We're only gonna get it out to everybody.
Okay, let's go along. All right. Questions for the news media? Works by counsel, Mr. Gunnerby.
I echo Linda's request for voting for the renewal levy and also I want to thank Linda for that extraordinary work she's done on the sidewalk.
Mr. Leeder?
I encourage somebody to go down to one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of Farmers Bank.
Home savings?
No, no, home savings, home savings. But it's home savings.
Yeah, at the prices.
At four o'clock, four thirty. It starts at four thirty. Go wherever.
Smart, maybe?
Yes.
Can I give you...
Anthony, that would be a good PR call. The judge will...
Probably the town judge.
Yes, you do. Any remarks, please?
No.
Mr. Leeder?
I'd like to congratulate Linda for the good work in getting the money and using the technique of going around them instead. And going to the whole reason for the... She's very intelligent, she's smart, thank you.
All right, now that, just to remind, we'll talk about it next meeting, but to remind everyone, our meeting in November will be Wednesday, November 5th, instead of Tuesday, November 4th, because of the election.
Okay, what, what should we start putting signs up and?
They're up there.
Now? Now? And after the north and stuff like that?
I grabbed somewhere.
The signs are back.
Grabbed.
Okay, now, Mark, Mark Fainville, to this.
I don't know if they're close to you.
We all somehow was trying to pay for some stuff when I said that we would share it all.
Yeah.
I know, he's trying to know.
I thought you did the copying, the on machines.
I don't know.
And the signs were already paid for.
Were they?
Yeah, those are signs we asked to make this stuff. I think this is a real positive.
You had the motion, Mr. Leonard, and then I'll second it, all right?
Second?
All in favor?
Any opposed?
All right, eight, thirty-six.